Johnny would be there. I would respond to her.
So we'll call the meeting to order. And we're going to give you some of the agenda a little bit because we have a few more guests than we usually do at our meeting. And I'll call on Dr. Trump and Miller to talk about our amazing volleyball team.
Well, it's an absolute pleasure for the second year in a row to have this group in. Tina, Mike, and.
Owen.
So they've had another phenomenal year, undefeated regular season, is second consecutive year.
First time.
First time in program history.
Of course.
That's Jones. Back to back.
Yeah.
Back to back national championship or national tournament registration. So you got to recognize you and we have a resolution that the chairman refuses to read. So whereas the FMCC Lady Raiders volleyball team have demonstrated success with a 65 and 10 record over the past three years. Which includes Mountain Valley Conference Championships each year and NJCAA District A and Region Three Championships 2022 and 2023. With an undefeated 2023 conference season in the finish and 2023 NJCAA National Tournament. Whereas the FMCC Lady Raiders received further recognition with multiple players receiving Mountain Valley Conference and NJCAA Regional Funnels. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Fulton Montgomery Community College. That it hereby commends the Lady Raiders volleyball team for their success in the Mountain Valley Conference, the NJCAA Region Three, and the nation. The 16th day of November in the year 2023.
Tina's really not big on species, but I just want to say something quick. Probably mid-July, Tina was following me like, I don't know if we're going to have a team. We've only got a few of these two kids, hoping that we get some more. And probably in August, we picked up probably three or four kids that just moved from incredible team. I tell her now every night to stop at sports and get some scratch offs. She gets kids that were first female state, get kids that want to play in their yard. Great group of young ladies. They do it on the court, in the classroom, super coaches. I think they complement each other really well. And looking forward, we brought no one back last year. It was a brand new team. So we have the ability to bring back most of the team next year. And I know there's a lot of kids that are in the mix right now that we're recruiting. So not to put any pressure on you, but we need to do it again. Just thank you for all that you guys do for the team and for our college. I appreciate it.
Coming into a season with no returners. Mike and I worked extremely hard and we're unsure of how we were going to start off the season. And when we put together all of the recruits that were coming in, we had some players that knew about employers and maybe two players that played together in the past. But nobody that had really been a part of the same team. So we weren't really quite sure how they were going to mesh together. It didn't take long, you know, the first couple of weeks until the season. And it just got better from day one. So I'm completely impressed and proud of the team this year. You know, they went up against and they sometimes compared themselves to last season. Whether they think like an I did that or not. But they surpassed our last season team in every way that you can possibly imagine. And broke our records themselves. So it's something to be proud of. They did a phenomenal job this year. And we're going to come back strong next year and do the same thing over again.
We got a recruit. Starts all.
Club season starts now, tournament in the next couple of months. And hopefully Mike and I were successful last year recruiting Elena through our club team. And hopefully we'll be in that same position again this year.
And Elena's from Queensberry.
Yes.
So.
Nice. First time in program history with us recruiting a kid to play for us from Queensberry. So we're excited that we're branching out for this.
And they also run a program here on Sundays and have probably, how many kids do you have in the program?
About 70. It's our, we started Full Mount Volleyball Club. We started sock and dogging when I was teaching it and coaching it for all of Perth. And we left there and then we started our Full Mount Volleyball Club here. And so we kind of have the area kid. We have about 70 kids from surrounding here. So practice on Sundays here and tournament start in January. It goes through May.
I hope always to come stand and get them to be the best athletes as we possibly can in the hopes that we get them here in the home. Become senior seniors and decipher the number of college. Sometimes they're successful, sometimes not.
They're great students too. I have several other students in my class who will be able to see.
Some strengths in there. We have a few that couldn't make it tonight because they're in class Sunday.
And they're nurses and, you know, so that's a huge undertaking to do what they do and be here and represent our institution. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we're going to fund to our educational children.
All right. My pleasure to introduce the superstars on campus.
Can't outshine these three.
Town and Julie Lee.
Thank you everyone for having us here. I'm Rachel and I'm our Queensberry professor and our director of Baby Real Health. With me is Julie Lee and Chris Stevens. So we'd like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to talk about the creation of the Direct Support Professional Curriculum. We did this through a collaboration with OPWGD, which is an office for people with developmental disabilities. So we want to show the short clip. This is by W. B. Ryer, who gives overview of the support and threat support in all of our experiences. So thanks. We'd like to talk about our Business and Community Partnerships Team. So this is a team that is located within our academic chairs division. We use this partnership team to be able to support the academic programs such as our DSPs. So one thing that we did, our Behavioral Health Grant, we actually upgraded the terminology in our classroom. So this greatly impacted the quality that our DSPs are experiencing because they are online homework.
So I have the honor and privilege of overseeing this DSP grant. And I also teach the human addiction research, so we're doing it. So this all happened very quickly. So it was, I think it was right at the end of last spring semester. SUNY approached us about, you know, working with OPWGD on this grant. And we met very quickly and got our application into the grant. And then we were awarded that in early autumn. I don't know, I was away for a couple of weeks. I got back and I think we had two weeks before the semester started and there was a lot of work to do. So what's really awesome about this grant is that she's full tuition for the students that are a part of it. And that's reimbursed to us from OPWGD. We have an assigned academic coach. Right now we're working with Maureen Ryan and she's available to our student on teams. Most of these students are doing this 100% web-based and they're working at Lexington. So it's important that the coaching be very acceptable to them. So she's done a great job with that. We now have a cohort, our first cohort of 11 students. And we have 30 spots for the spring. So we're in the, we're about three or four weeks left of finishing up DSP one. And when those students finish that, they get a $750 payment. They've also been provided with academic materials, free books, and the computers if they need a computer to have. Well, they're a part of our program. Okay, so the mapping of the curriculum is one of the things I was doing really quickly in those couple of weeks. So how this works is any DSP is a national alliance for direct service professionals. And they have a badge system. And so when, when someone receives at least 50 hours of education and 15 of these E-badges, they become a DSP one. So that's what they're able to do with us by taking the three DSP one courses. So that's the nine credits they would get their tuition paid for that. That's just a national alliance. And so it's a national certificate and it honors, you know, at Lexington and the role of the DSP is obviously very important. And Lexington and Liberty are both, you know, huge employers in our region. And so, you know, having a connection with them is very valuable. It's something that we've had at campus for many years. But now you can see this picture, this is pics of our current students in the bottom there. And those are people that have worked at Lexington for many years. Cindy Fonda has worked there 26 years. And she said to me, the first time I met her, she said, you know, I've worked so hard and I give my life to this career. I love what I do. I love serving the population I serve. And it's really, really great to be recognized for that, to be able to get some type of credential. You know, she said, CNA is a credential. I do all that. I pass this. I do all that and I do a lot more. So it's really, this initial cohort, I think is a special people. There are incredible students. I could tell you their work is amazing. And we're just really excited to see what they're going to do. So they'll be able to go on and do DSP two with us and then hopefully 30 more students, right? So that's where Christie comes in. She's getting those students for us.
Before you go on to the next slide, Julie is underselling herself because she did a lot of work in the summer to come up with these courses. So we didn't actually offer DSP one or DSP two portfolio classes. Those were things that Julie had to come up with because we learned, or Julie really learned in the process, the writing that's going to be involved for these testimonials and these badges. That it was going to be a lot outside of the courses that we had already chosen for the program that we would award them credit. They were going to be doing a lot of work in that area. So that was an awful lot to undertake in the summer. And then we did, we got the notice in August, somewhere mid-August, that we were awarded this and we could move forward, which was about two and a half weeks of the time actually. So we could go to the next slide, please. So as far as the recruitment, once we did get that notice, I worked really closely with Lexington. They were very welcoming. I was able to go in person. I did a lot of visits there in the morning. I did some in the evenings, actually. I did some virtual sessions. I probably saw about 25 employees total sometime in August for information on the program and understand the courses and how to program and work with the funding. And from that, we had about 13 registered for fall. Within the first couple of days, we had two that said, this is just too quick. I feel a little bit overwhelmed and nervous that we postponed till spring. So we did. So we started with 11 strong and we're still going very strong. Those students will continue in the spring semester to work on some of the courses for the DSP two program. And this time now, we are actually recruiting and getting ready for our spring semester. So I'm still working with Lexington very closely. I've gone there for an in-person visit. I've been doing a lot of phone calls. I've been doing some virtual sessions we have coming up. And so we are starting to enroll for spring. Currently I have five enrolled for spring. I have a few appointments next week, so this is the time of day we're starting to come in. A couple of other things though that we're doing for recruitment that are kind of creative, I would say. We did have a big press event last week with the OPWGD, the Office for People with Developmental Disabilities, who funds us. They came out and had a great press event. President Trump Miller did a wonderful welcome. Lexington A R C was there. Cindy Fonda, our student, was amazing. She spoke about her passion for the work and what this program means to her. So that was a great event. I feel like we're getting some traction from that as well. And then also we have an event on December 7th that we just scheduled. We're working really closely with John Ramasta in the staff, the Associate Dean for Enrollment Management and his admission staff. We're going to have a great community event. It's also open to students. So with this program, what's unique is you don't have to be a current DSP in the field to do this. In fact, you could be a community member, maybe want to become a DSP. And the only other thing you need to do besides the courses is take some internship experience. Because the goal is to get hired as a DSP. So we're doing some social media right now. We have a great commercial. We're working in progress. This event on the 7th, we already just posted this morning. We have seven people signed up to come in. Some of those are current students that are interested in learning more. And the program, again, pays tuition fees. We have laptops available. We're going to get them through at the end of the semester. So those are kind of some of the things we're working on there. One last creative thing that Julie came up with was for a referral fee. So any of our current DSPs in the program, if they refer a community member, a friend, family member, somebody who's not already a DSP into the program. They'll get a $250 referral fee after a drop period, once we know they're attending classes. And then at the end of the semester, once they complete DSP one, they'll get another $250 referral fee. And that's all paid for by OPWGD funding. So we're hoping to get a little bit more, you know, from that area as well. We have a couple of billboards right now. We also, we did a couple of billboards, Fulton Montgomery County, we have those. You should be starting to see us if you're on Facebook, on the website, on the main page of the website. You should really start seeing a lot of the news about this because with this funding, we have spots for 30 in the spring. But we can probably do more. OPWGD is saying we want a lot of DSPs. If you fill those 30 spots in spring, you know, let us know. We can probably get you more. If you have any questions.
So if a number of the folks that are in the waiting classes are already working in that field, does this open doors for the KBA's then? Are they within the agencies? And yeah, absolutely. And are you targeting folks who also, is it also for folks who are interested in?
Yes, absolutely. It's both. I would say for the current DSPs, there could be a wage progression plus the any DSP is national. So if they were to go anywhere else in the country, they're going to have this credential with them. And then for the current community members, for certain students that are interested in the program too. We haven't thought about students in the program before this. We haven't thought that maybe we have health studies majors that might want to do this as well and work as a DSP. So that's an audience that we're looking at right now. Because it is only a few courses actually, if you look at it. And some of these students might be taking one or two of these courses as electives already. So now they only need one or two more and they're going to get a credential, a stipend, hopefully a job out of this. What's great about DSP two is you can do it per diem. It doesn't have to be something where you're hired on and now you have to be full-time admitted. You could still work being a student and you could maybe just be a per diem DSP.
We also learn conversations with AICF and most of these to be, maybe some high school students would be interested or their English isn't a language. We're trying, you know, to think of word out and get if men can work for you. The money's there right now. You also have the in-person visits with Liberty?
So we have a great partnership with Liberty. They currently take advantage of our SUNY apprenticeship program. They haven't necessarily hopped onto this, but they haven't said no to it either. So if a student came to us who works at Liberty, they would be able to do this program through OPWGD funding for sure. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments or union comments? Hearing none. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes of last month's meeting? And if so, and I have a sponsor to approve the minutes, Trustee Jaswith the second. Trustee Preston, any discussion on the motion on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries? I have nothing to report as the chair, so we'll move on to the rest of the board.
And I'll be brief because you're getting carried for me a lot tonight. I attended the recent chancellor meeting for campus presidents. The primary focus of that meeting was on the report that SUNY was charged in compiling in the latest budget legislation. With regard to enrollment, strategic enrollment plan for the systems. Part of that budget language specified that the chancellor and system administration would collaborate their campuses. And so their method of collaboration is they set us a template to fill out and they'll combine those and report them in aggregate to the legislature. At the appointment time in January that's due. So, you know, that was, he was also in Puerto Rico at the time. For the summer's convention. And they announced that collaboration with universities there. Try to bring more students to SUNY from Puerto Rico. So those were the two primary topics that took place there. And with that, I'll pause for any questions and then queue up for some other reports later on.
Thank you. The college assembly report is in your packet. And for recognize the student trustee, if you have anything to report today. Thank you. Dr. Trump in the local handing of ideas to me.
First, we're going to do the foundation reporting. If that's okay.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Don't use the skip rule.
No, that's okay. So we recently had the 16th annual distinguished alumni dinner. And you were able to attend that. It was a nice event. We were able to honor two local alums, Joe Semio and Kayla Henry, as well as your third annual Rock Tower Award. That was a word to defend more asset management who has been a good partner, whole with the college and the community. As the written report states, there's an art show coming up. And then the other item that I just want to draw your attention to is that the foundation board recently voted to approve the sale of the land, the 155 acres that they own across the road. That's of course, they've entered into a purchase sale agreement for that. There's some contingencies involved, so we'll see where that leads. But they are there pursuing the sale of that property. And if you have any questions that you may have about that. Hearing none, I'll move on to the financial report that's in your packet. Our fiscal year is just, you know, in its infancy, so our expenses are tracking nicely. And we are in the throes of the audit. The field work has been created for the annual audit. Now it's just a matter of those going back and forth. We won't be presenting that to you until March because we always have to wait for GRS and TRS reports and those don't come out until after the first of the year. Other than once that happens, they'll put the finishing touches on the audit, have that in product presentation in March. Any questions on finance? And buildings and grounds. So it's a brief report in your packet on buildings and grounds, but what I'll update you on.
What about the budget transfer?
Oh, there's, is there much of that to pay?
There is my question.
There is a motion in your packet and the manager will look for it and sponsor it for you.
There is a motion for a budget transfer in your packet. As many of you know, or the new trustee may not know, we are tasked with the approval of all budget transfers that exceed $5,000. They have been frequently recognizing the need to redistribute budget fund to cover expenses. And. Need some glasses to see the budget transfers in. It's a department transferring from DSP full-time, how are we? And breaking that up into administrative and human resources. It's all on the same, it's all the same. So I would sponsor the motion to approve that budget transfer and ask for a second. Trustee Jaswith, any discussion on the motion? On the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries? And we'll move on to academic affairs with.
Actually, we're going to buildings and grounds.
Back to buildings.
Backs and bills, backs, buildings and grounds. So there's a brief report from our director of facilities. But at the Fulton County meeting on Monday, they were the final step to get approval for our 2024, 2025 capital projects. So we did approve that plan, that plan as best. Those documents have been forwarded to State University and consequently have been submitted to the director of the Division of Budget. For their consideration in the state budget for this year. So just as a quick reminder what those projects are. It's replacing the electrical distribution in the Welcome Center. And campus paving, and that's about it. Campus paving phase one, those are two pretty significant projects. Also within that is our foundation projects, the turf field. Nothing else. We're doing a placeholder in the state budget for the turf field. And the cybersecurity lab that's funded by Montgomery County and by the foundation. So those projects were moved forward and are in process and will make their way into the state budget for this year.
Excellent. Thank you. And now it's time for academic affairs. Scott, ready?
Thank you, manager. I'd like to just orally highlight some of the information that's in your packet this evening. Radiological technology faculty recently convened a meeting of the clinical preceptors. All sites were in attendance and the preceptors were trained on J-Cert requirements of student supervision. Title four grading policies and trajectory. And so we have a good discussion and good relationships with all of our clinical affiliates. Thanks to the work of the faculty from the technology faculty. Marty Waffle and Billy I have been working with faculty and staff at Greater Amsterdam School District. HFM Voces, Capital Region Voces. To further refine career pathways for students interested in computer information systems and our cybersecurity programs. On the workforce development and community partnership sides, aside from the great presentation we heard earlier. Our fall CNA class is underway. We have a total, we have eight students, including employees from Wilkinson Center, Nathan Littauer, is that how you pronounce it? Littauer, and Palantin Nursing Home. Working with our instructor, the college has purchased over $10,000 in equipment and supplies. From a generous donation from the Johnstown Hospital Foundation. Over the past summer to upgrade our CNA classroom. That includes two EKG machines, accessories, new mannequins, new hospital beds, and other classroom simulation accessories, technology. and other classroom simulation accessories, technology. Uh, our C four cannabis expo took place in October, saw over a hundred attendees from around the capital region. Um, the event partly sponsored by the Cannabis Workforce Institute, um, brought the SUNY C four concursia, participated in highlighted educational offerings. Uh, and our local employer, E29 Labs welcomed Shelley Roberts to the conference as the keynote. WTEN News 10 covered the event and interviewed our Christie Davis, who you heard from earlier tonight, to highlight FM certificate offerings within the cannabis industry. Uh, our fall internship fair took place on October twenty-fourth. We welcomed twenty local employers and agencies and over a hundred students. Internship opportunities varied from healthcare addiction, human services, criminal justice, business, media, digital arts, early childhood education, and electric technology. And, uh, we were recently awarded funds to grow our internship program. Um, with this funding, students, again, and similar to what we heard about earlier tonight, can receive a stipend upon successful completion of accredited internship and will receive transportation assistance through gas cards to help them with their commuting costs. Early childhood education certificate, the AAS, human services, AAS, addiction services, AAS, all require internships as part of their graduation requirements. And other majors that are currently showing interest in internships include media, digital technology, business marketing, cybersecurity, and computer information. Um, we've been, uh, we've been working with the Fulton County CRG, the Capital Region Center for Economic Road, Regional Center of, Regional Chamber of Commerce, and the FMS Workforce Solutions Center to promote National Apprentice Week, uh, which is, um, is going on right now. And earlier this week, we hosted the Advanced Manufacturers Roundtable Discussion. We were so honored to have Trustee Wilson, uh, appear with us there. And, um, this featured welcoming remarks from the New York State Department of Labor representatives, as well as representatives from the CEG and MEIP, Manufacturing Intermediary Apprenticeship Program. Um, it's to promote registered apprenticeships in New York State. So under a registered apprenticeship program, employees can utilize up to five thousand dollars in grants towards education for their students within the SUNY system. So that's terrific. Uh, under, uh, new articulation agreements, we have, uh, a new articulation agreement for our AAS entertainment technology to the BA Bachelor of Arts Communications Program at the College of St. Rose. And we have a new agreement with Performer BOCs for visual communications and media arts students, which allows them to articulate night events. Um, and then finally, we had our transfer fair, um, around, on October sixteenth. There were thirty colleges in attendance, including both SUNY and private institutions. And, uh, the event was, uh, well-attended by students. I'm happy to answer any questions, you're welcome.
Thank you. And student affairs with our new Spencer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the full report of the Student Affairs Division is in your packet. Um, and that highlights the, uh, great work that's being done all across campus to enroll and serve our students. Uh, some updates, though, that are not in the packet, I just wanted to share with you. We had a wonderful open house on November fourth. We had a hundred and seventy-five visitors on campus, including seventy-six potential new students. And it was a, it was a big hit that day. I also wanted to share something which some of you know, it's near and dear to my heart, it's International Education Week. And, uh, every year we get some statistics, uh, from the federal government on, uh, in a national report that's shared out. And part of the report provides information on where our campus FMCC ranks among other campuses in the state in particular. So it uses last year's enrollment numbers. So last year, but we're finding out now, this week, that, uh, we are ranking number four in the New York State District Twenty-One, which is our new redistrict, which is basically the North Country. So we are behind Clarkson, St. Lawrence, and SUNY Plattsburgh, but well ahead of SUNY at around that count. Nice to hear. Uh, and before the redistricting, we were in the capital region. And almost every year, we've ranked in the top ten. And so if we, I looked and we would have still been there in the top ten. So that's nice to know as well. So it is estimated that our students here at FMCC, international students, contributed one point nine million dollars to the local economy in New York State. That includes, of course, their education costs, living costs, retail, transportation, telecommunications, health insurance, et cetera. So that was based on sixty-six students last year. And currently, we're at, we're over seventy students this fall, uh, from about twenty-some countries. So that concludes the report.
Thank you. Moving on to diversity, equity, and inclusion with John Von.
Thank you. Um, well, I put it in your packet here, and let me just touch on some of the five points here. Uh, I did send that nonviolent communication packet out to, uh, employees and how that fits into this. Well, I was at diversity, equity, and inclusion meeting a few days ago in SUNY, which was nice on a number of levels. So I got a couple of things out of that. Number one, what CDOs do is wildly, wildly different from place to place. So we're trying to get some awareness about that. The other thing that was nice, a lot of what I've been implementing here, people are starting to touch on, and we're actually including the nonviolent communication. And a couple of their programs and mindfulness, they're starting to touch on that bit. Uh, but some colleges like, um, Cortland's doing some really interesting things. Uh, they also recently, you know, just, uh, made a statement about their Native Americans who used to be on the grounds. Um, so what I'm getting out of a lot of this is a whole lot to do and there's a whole lot to coordinate. And this is gonna take some real time and effort to, uh, start to pull these things together. The good news is, I think, the benefits we've benefited one here, we're starting to understand about how we can raise awareness here. The second part is, is, um, changing to help you a little bit in understanding the organizational piece here, uh, which is a bit more complicated, to say the least. We, um, now, um, first, the equity and inclusion, of course, now included in our division meetings, formerly also in the, uh, college assembly, which I think is, um, a real positive thing, is we start to raise, uh, some awareness about this. Uh, oh, and we have a climate survey coming soon. We have a new, um, let's see, what's it, Vice Chancellor for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Dr. Nizariel. He's, uh, now, um, taken hold of the CDO meetings, uh, with Chris Grant, who's also, um, an assistant there. So, I believe one thing about this, but we have to take a look at our, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion plan here. And I need like three days to just sit and focus on it. Uh, because, you know, same for a twenty-five point plan that we probably need to look at a bit more closely and do some things to document. Uh, we're doing, so a lot of this is actually gonna be, we're taking all of the, what we're doing, documenting it, and trying to stay updated with it. We're also gonna get a visit from Dr. Nizariel one day. I don't know if you've had any conversations just yet. I haven't approached them because we have a bunch of stuff going on at this point. Uh, and that climate survey is, uh, probably, we're gonna do that in, uh, for both students and the employees in the spring. I'm looking at that, it's not gonna cost us anything. And, uh, from that, we'll be determining some of the directions that we're gonna take here. So now that's the end.
Thank you. Accreditation?
So, uh, I, I put this out, one of my updates to the trustees, we had a recent meeting for the accreditation liaison officer with Middle States. And the discussion was about the annual institutional updates that we do. And, uh, since they changed their reporting structure, this is the first time where they've actually taken action on those annual updates. And so they, they took a look at two years. They happened to select probably the worst two years that they possibly could in terms of, uh, looking at and comparing right before COVID and COVID. And on, on several key measures, anyone who didn't meet a threshold is required to provide supplemental information. So we, uh, because we have, uh, an enrollment decline, uh, that exceeded the threshold between two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, or two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Um, we are required to provide supplemental information report on where our enrollment is today, what steps we've taken to address that. And we have to have that in, in early December. So, uh, I had shared, uh, shared that out with you previously, but I just wanted to, to, um, talk about that here in case there's any more questions or any further discussion we're gonna have on that topic.
What's your business going to be right?
Uh, two thousand twenty-five, so a year from this spring. This year is self-study year. And then, you know, toward the end of this year, the trustees will have the opportunity to, to review and approve the, the self-study report. And then next year, that will be transmitted to Middle States and then, and see when coming during the spring of two thousand twenty-five.
Personnel with Trustee Jaswith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff additions, transfers, promotions, and judgments, resignations, and/or retirements. Jay Martin started October twenty-third as principal clerk for the past year. Jase has worked at the Fleming, uh, physical therapy consultant, PC, and for St. Mary's Urgent Care for three years prior to that. Jase has provided clerical support for several years and is currently attending Bryant and Strat College for his associate's degree in accounting. Jase holds certificates in information technology and criminal justice. Uh, Laura Carlson resigned as LPP counselor as of November third. Vacancy searches in progress are pending. Part-time security guard, search in progress. Fall, uh, twenty twenty-four nursing, uh, faculty, full-time search in progress. LPP coordinator, full-time grant-funded, search in progress. Coordinator for retention, full-time, grant-funded, search in progress. LPP counselor, full-time, grant-funded, search in progress. Director of Institutional Research in Effectiveness, full-time, grant-funded, search in progress. Nursing lab coordinator, full-time, grant-funded, search in progress. Rad tech lab coordinator, part-time, grant-funded, search in progress. With that, Madam Chair, here's my report.
Thank you. On behalf of the policy unit, I can confirm that there is nothing to report. I'm, or I make a motion to take this into what I am speaking, will be a rather brief executive session. Does anyone have any other business to bring before the board this evening? Um, with that said, um, I have been asked by Trustee Jaswith to make a motion to go into executive session this evening to discuss a personnel matter, um, in the public safety department. So if I assume that, and it will second, I'm, that assumption, um, and we could take, oh, there will be no business to conduct for me. Um, I would ask Dr. Trump, if you are, to stay with us during, um, our second session. So all in favor of a brief executive session?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone, for coming. And happy Thanksgiving.